Take your time. You ready, gentlemen?
Ready.
All right, ready to roll? Good morning, everybody. Today is Thursday, November the 13th, 2025. It is exactly 10:01 a.m. And this is the Josephine County Board of Commissioners meeting for our weekly business session. We're going to start this morning's meeting off with an invocation by Crystal Alamand. And following that, please arise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Good morning, Crystal.
Morning. Thank you for the opportunity to pray with you guys. Father, we just thank you for this place and this space. We thank you for the leaders of this community and the citizens that are here who have a heart for this place as well. We just thank you ultimately for your love for Grants Pass and what you desire to do in the county of Josephine. And we just dedicate this time for you. You're the ultimate authority. We thank you that you put peoples in positions and everyone has strengths and giftings that get to be utilized. So we just pray today that the spirit of wisdom would flow through this place, that innovative vision would be brought to light, that each person's strengths and weaknesses could come together in one accord. So we just bind any strife and contention and we just call forth the Prince of Peace to rule and reign in this place. We thank you, Lord, that you hear us and that you're faithful and that you're faithful to keep what is committed to you. So we commit this time in this space to you. I pray that each person in here would encounter your radical love and just really know the depth of it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please rise and join me in the pledge.
Aye.
Please.
Aye.
Okay, we're going to call this meeting to order. First item on the agenda is Declaration of Potential Conflicts of Interest. Commissioner Smith?
After reviewing the agenda, I see no conflict of interest. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Barnett?
The agenda as well, and I'll see any conflicts. Thank you.
Okay, and I have reviewed it as well and see no conflicts. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing, and this is in the matter of annexation to the Josephine County Community Library District by petition of landowner without election. And we're going to open this hearing right now at 10:03. And we have six different order numbers, the first one being 2025-059 for Trey Hearn, Keith C., and Nancy K. The second one is order number 2025-060 for the Nelson Revocable Trust, James F. and Cheryl L. The next one is order number 2025-061 for the Pachaud Family Trust. Next one is 2025-062, the Howard Family Revocable Trust. 2025-063, the Ron Calio, Catherine, and Solomon E. And the last one is 2025-064, the Granville Dale J. and Terry. Yes, Dale J. and Terry. Right, now we'll have open up for testimony. Each person will be given three minutes to speak. And to be clear, these three minutes are to speak to this subject, to this topic only. Is there anyone here this morning who would like to speak to that? Okay, I see no hands anywhere. At this time, I will entertain some motions. We'll start with motion to approve order number 2025-059.
I'll make a motion to approve order number 2025-059.
And I'll second that.
A motion and second, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnett?
Yes.
Commissioner Black?
Yes.
Motion carry, three to zero.
Thank you. Next, I would entertain a motion for the approval of order number 2025-060.
I entertain a motion as stated.
Second that motion?
Okay, we have a motion and second, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnett?
Yes.
Commissioner Black?
Yes.
Motion carry, three to zero.
Thank you. Next one I would entertain is the approval of order number 2025-061.
Make a motion to approve order number 2025-061.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion and second, any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Barnett?
Yes.
Commissioner Black?
Yes.
Motion carry, three to zero.
Thank you. And next, I would entertain a motion to approve order number 2025-062.
I'll make a motion to approve as stated.
Second that motion?
Motion and second, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnett?
Yes.
Commissioner Black?
Yes.
Motion carry, three to zero.
Next, I will entertain a motion for order number 2025-063.
I'll make a motion to approve order number 2025-063.
I'll second that.
Motion and second, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Barnett?
Yes.
Commissioner Black?
Yes.
Motion carry, three to zero.
Next, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of order number 2025-064.
I'll make a motion as stated.
Second that motion?
Okay, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Barnett?
Yes.
Commissioner Black?
Yes.
Motion carry, three to zero.
Okay, next, I'll make an emotion to adjourn early and go have ice cream.
Okay.
Sorry, sorry, got distracted there. All right, we'll close this public hearing now at 10:07. And we'll move on to the next agenda item. This is a public hearing as well. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2025-003, an ordinance amending the Josephine County Code. And this is ordinance from ordinance number 2018-004 by amending the text of the Josephine County Code Title Number 19 for Rural Land Development Code to update code sections and to create Chapter 19.998, the Marijuana Businesses. And this first reading was held on October the 23rd, 2025. And we'll open this hearing right now at 10:07. And I would entertain a motion now for the ordinance number 2025-003 to be read by title only, and that's by title only.
I'll make that motion to read the ordinance by title only.
Thank you, and I will second that. Any discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Barnett?
Yes.
Commissioner Black?
Yes.
Motion carry, three to zero.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Next up, we have Mr. Black from Planning Department, Community Development, to give us a little presentation on this again.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
James Black. Yes, this is the second reading of the ordinance to update our code. This is the fifth hearing, land use hearing, we've had on this project. This started about over a year ago. Planning Commission held a land use hearing, recommended approval of these text amendments to the board. The board heard this matter over two land use hearings in which they, you approved this, this matter. We have now the ordinance to go into effect. If it's approved today, this ordinance would go into effect on February 11th of 2026. If the board has any questions on this, I'll be happy to answer them.
I think we've reviewed this pretty well.
Yeah, you've, we've been through this how many times now? So James, thank you for your thoroughness and counsel as well because it really informed us on what was going on and we feel comfortable, so thank you.
Thank you, yeah, and this is the second reading and final reading. Okay, great. At this time, we'll entertain testimony from anybody here this morning. Be given three minutes to speak to this subject and this subject only. Behind, in the back of the wall, sir?
Good morning. Patrick Rooney, Grants Pass, and I like ice cream too, and I'd like to go out and get some. Thanks for the suggestion. I don't know what you guys are doing in regards to the marijuana dispensary places in terms of, are you toughening up some standards or whatever you might be doing? So this is just going to be a little random from me, just thoughts here. It's been bothering me a long time, the drug problem that we've had in, in the state of Oregon. Measure 110, I'm glad that they pulled that back to some degree and made it more rational so we don't have such a major problem. I do notice that there's a major problem with weed in general in Oregon. A lot of people like to smoke weed recreationally, whatever. I guess as far as I'm concerned, they can do as they want to do. But a lot of people use it, you know, recreational, a lot of people use it for medical purposes. I understand that. And I'm sure it has some uses apparently for medical purposes. I know that as someone who, in my past life, smoked a lot of weed, I can tell you that there's a real danger in it, especially in getting into it. And it seems like it's gone all over our state now. And one of the problems with it, obvious problem is, and I'm kind of broad brushing a little bit, and people will say, well, I smoke weed and I work hard. But I notice that it does tend to have some issues in terms of the productivity of the state just in general. Once you get high, you kind of like to just kick back and watch some TV or listen to some music or whatever. And again, I'm broad brushing a little bit, but I found that to be true in general. There's also a spiritual component that's almost never discussed regarding marijuana. And that is, almost any drug that will get you high will also take down your mind and spirit's ability to actually see what's going on. It tends to blur you. And when you are blurred, you are subject to all sorts of influences. It is almost never discussed, that's why I'm just saying it today. Once you're, once you're blurred in such a way, you're open to all sorts of things. And that's even on a spiritual level, which I have found even spiritual attack and things of that nature that are very, very serious. I hope the churches get on to this and start doing more about this and talk about this. And I'd also like to see, whatever we're going to do with the homeless situation, not just, that's a whole other issue, but bringing people down to a place where they're allowed to smoke weed or take drugs and come in, and then once they're in the place, they're still allowed to keep doing it. I just think it's absolute insanity. And we have these cages up the street here that are out of control. And if we want to change, we're going to have to do a change and require some kind of drug testing or something. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Would anybody else like to testify to this subject matter only? Yeah, right here in the aisle.
Judy Aaron's, resident of Josephine County. You know, I want to just give kudos to Patrick Rooney because I can see his point where he's coming from, and he says he's walked in those shoes before. You know, and one other thing, I'm not that familiar with this, this reading unfortunately. I'm, you know, more in some other issues like with education I'll talk about down the line. But I was wondering, when you're doing this ordinance, have you, have you made partnership with the sheriff and with the, and the police department? And the reason I say that, they would be the ones that know, the people, are they committing accidents? Are they in the middle of the road? You know, you know, are they having some major problems? Are they the ones that out the street, 2 o'clock in the morning, looking for some more, I don't know, revenue to get their weed or whatever they get? And I don't think we want to be known as a community that, hey, come here for your weed or whatever that's been here that Patrick was suggesting. So I'm just hoping through this ordinance here, there is a connection where the police or the sheriff says, you know, because of where our ordinances are, we have a more, we're getting more calls on that thing. I'm just saying it's, I think they're related. Just like I told you years ago that there was a police, I don't know, sheriff had said, I saw on TV once, he said, the more uneducated people you have, the more we're going to have to build up our force, just because they're uneducated and they do things that are not right, and they're not capable of getting out in society and feeding themselves. So I just think they're connected and I hope that's been taken into consideration when you guys are doing this ordinance this morning. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir? As you're walking up, I just want to thank you for your respectful responses the last time you were here.
Of course. Cannabis isn't your problem in this community, it's the tweakers you endorse.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak to this topic? Okay, seeing none, thank you, everyone, for your testimony. Bring it back to the board. I will entertain a motion right now to approve ordinance number 2025-003.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2025-003.
I'll second that.
Motion and second, any discussion?
No.
Okay, I would just like to point out that this has been a long process. I appreciate everybody that came here to comment. I would just like to remind people in the future that when ordinances and things of significance happen in our community and that come before this board, that you reach out to us earlier because this train has kind of left the station already. But I would encourage you to participate in the future in any subject matter that we have before the board. All right, please call the roll.
Oh, yes. Can we respond still?
Certainly.
To the comments?
Yeah, certainly.
I know Patrick and Judy, you guys had some comments on that. And I think education is the key in all this with any substances, you know, look at alcohol. Growing up, you know, we had got all these programs because drinking and driving and crashes, and it still happens today. They've decreased though, and that was through education and clubs. And marijuana groups have actually stepped up. Parents have stepped up, schools have stepped up. It all starts in our schools, I really do believe that, with the kids, to learn about this. That's why there's age restrictions on some of these substances. And, you know, just like cigarette smoking, look, that is almost gone now, okay? It's now vaping. So now, what are the side effects of vaping, right? I'm just saying, everything has a pro and a con to it. And I just think, Patrick, you know, like you said, you did it. Thank you for confessing that, you didn't have to. But, but that's okay. That shows that you learned from it and it wasn't the best thing for you. So thank you for doing that. We, as a culture, as a community, we have to deal with these problems all the time and solve them. Nothing's perfect, but we're trying, so we appreciate your input and thank you.
Okay, thank you. Since I opened it up for you to respond, Commissioner Smith, would you like to?
Well, Judy, I'll let you know that the sheriff was consulted in this, and he was, he was for it.
Okay, thank you. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnett?
Yes.
Commissioner Black?
Yes.
Motion carry, three to zero.
Okay, thank you, everyone. At this time, we will close this public hearing at 10:17. And we will move on to the next agenda item. This is also a public hearing. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2025-004, an ordinance repealing Chapter 5.35 of the County Code relating to Marijuana Business Annual Compliance Certificate and Regulations. The first reading of this was held on October the 23rd, 2025. And we will open the public hearing right now at 10:18. And same as the previous, I would entertain a motion now, ordinance number 2025-00, to be read by title only.
I'll go ahead and make a motion as stated, title only.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and second, any discussion?
No.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Barnett?
Yes.
Commissioner Black?
Yes.
Motion carry, three to zero.
Thank you. And I believe we have Leah Harper from Legal online to speak to this.
Yes.
Good morning, Leah.
Good morning. This ordinance was enacted back in 2018 to enact time, place, and manner restrictions for marijuana businesses and grows. And now that this ordinance has been placed into Chapter 19 by the previous ordinance that we just heard, we need to remove this from Chapter 5.35 of the code.
Okay, thank you for that, Leah. Do we have any questions for Leah?
Thank you, Leah.
Okay. This time, I'll give the audience an opportunity for testimony. You'll be given three minutes to speak, three minutes on this subject and this subject only. Who would like to speak this morning? Okay, I don't see anyone, so I'll bring it back to the board. And at this time, I entertain, I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2025-004.
Make a motion to approve ordinance 2025-004.
And I'll second that.
Motion and second, any discussion?
No.
Hearing none, please call the roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnett?
Yes.
Commissioner Black?
Yes.
Motion carry, three to zero.
Thank you, everyone. And at this time, I will close the public hearing at 10:19. Next up is the third public hearing. This is in the matter of uniform procedures for setting fees charged by County Board of County, Board of County Commissioners, and these are various fees from the surveyor. I'm sorry, these are fees from the Board of County Commissioners, also various fees from the surveyor, various fees from Public Works, various fees from Recreation, various fees from the animal shelter, various fees from public health, and various fees from public health. This is adopting the fee schedule, and I'll open this hearing right now at 10:20 a.m. And we have Ruth Nelson from Finance here to speak to this. Good morning, Director Nelson.
Good morning. This is actually the fourth time that the fee change proposals have come to the board as part of the lengthy fee change process that we have. As you said, today is the public hearing and the final step to adopt the fee changes. The proposed fees have been available to the public on the county finance webpage during this entire process. And if adopted today, the fees will be effective January 1st, 2026. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Any questions for?
Just to make a little clarification for people to understand, we were charging fees almost at cost of doing, doing these, the operations that require the fees. So we're just trying to stay ahead of inflation on this and get it back to a more of a level playing field as far as the fees that we do. So I just wanted the public to know that.
That's correct, yeah.
Yeah, so can I?
Because of, yeah, inflationary reasons.
Inflationary reasons, also, can I clarify that? You said at cost, all these fees are done at cost because we don't make a profit at them. I know you probably misspoke, but a lot of these services that the county provides, we lose money on that particular action itself. And this is to get them more in line with what it costs the county to provide those services to the citizens.
So we break even.
We want to break even. We don't want to lose money. Yeah, that's our responsibility, yeah. Any comments or questions from you, Commissioner Barnett?
No, that was it.
Okay, I don't either. It's pretty clear, like the director said, this is the fourth time, and these will take effect on January the 1st.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Just like with all the other public hearings, we have an opportunity for the public to give testimony. You'll be given three minutes to speak and to speak to this subject matter only, right here with the brown vest. Okay, got it. Thank you. Olive green vest.
Deb Berg, Josephine County. I just want to thank you guys because we are moving forward with 4H and extension, and I'm excited about that. But we've been looking at some fees, and there are some inconsistencies with the fees, from what I can gather, that have been being paid. And so there was a $25 participation fee for kids, but I printed out some of the farebooks. Adults don't have to pay a participation fee. And then on top of that, kids were charged a $10 per head fee in the cattle. And they're already being charged the $25 participation, $10 for pre-fare, and then a commission if they participate in auction. But having had historical experience with the auction, some of these fees, like brand inspection, ear tags, should be paying out of those auction commissions. And yet, we have a blurring of the lines between NGOs and GOs because you're going to see here, I'm going to give you some documentation, that the fairgrounds is picking up one fee, the pre-fare fee is being picked up by an NGO, and they're charging it even to kids in FFA. So we're thinking they're going to try to charge that. And I looked, I called the state brand department today. They only paid $155.90 for the brand inspection. I called the co-op. It's 25, or, excuse me, 25 ear tags per pack. They tag them twice. I'm not sure it's redundant, you really don't need to. An ear tag is an ear tag. If it's your pre-fair ear tag, I'm going to read an ear tag when I load animals out. Been involved with loading animals out. But the cost for that was $43.99 per 25 packs. So there were 44 steers that made it through the brand inspection slip, and there were more than that that actually participated in pre-fare. So kids are being charged by an NGO, $150 through a requirement of the fairgrounds, a GEO. You can't have the blurring of lines between GOs and NGOs without involving the DOJ. So before they do fees, I recommend that the fair board carefully review their policies because there are no entry fees last year for food preserves. Can't tell for sheep. Know that in '24, they had to pay $10, not to the fairgrounds, but to Jen McGowan. And that here's the information for that pre-fare fee. The website's already been cleaned up for the fairgrounds. So I'm going to give these here. There are more, you can get more from Tamra. Kids don't mind paying their fair share, but should they be paying two and three times for something they've already paid for? We just need to clean things up. We don't need kids paying more to participate at fair than adults. And I know I've sat in at fair board meetings, it's an issue to get people to participate in fair, so we just need to do it fairly. Thank you. I'll hand these over.
Yes, thank you. And while you're doing that, I would just like to point out, this hearing isn't about fair fees at all. Not pertaining to the fair, but thank you for, thank you for your testimony. Right, anybody else? Would anybody else like to speak? Yes, right here in the third row.
Good morning, Commissioners. Nancy Lester, Grants Pass. I'd like to address the proposed increases in day-use parking fees for our parks. Current fee's $5 per car, and the proposed fee doubles to $10. At $5 a car, the current revenue is $181,000 a year. Fees doubling to 10 would be $362,000. 60% of the proposed fee increases for all parks comes from the increase in the day-use parking fee. This is a mathematical exercise without a lot of thought to what it means to the residents of the county and our visitors, and whether the parks would continue to see the same number of paying visitors. There are 11 parks and six boat ramps that this day-use parking fee would apply to. That amount is 36,000 visits per year. Seems like an awful lot of visits. Only during the summer months, when people are visiting our rivers and lakes, will most of these parks and boat ramps see this largest number of visitors. Many people who use the parks, use them for less than an hour. They take a walk, they exercise their dogs, they take a lunch break in the shade and by the water. Many are neighborhood parks, they're a rest stop on the way to the coast, or a stop of I-5 to explore new area. Doubling the fee will significantly impact these users and seems unfriendly, both to locals and those who pass through our county. I checked with our neighboring counties as well as the counties up north. Klamath, Douglas, and Maltoma charge nothing to visit their parks. Jackson, Lane, Clackamas, and Coos charge $5. Only Deschutes and Curry Counties charge a $10 day-use fee. Grants Pass City Parks are free to everyone. I love our beautiful county parks, and I want our friends and neighbors to enjoy them without worrying whether they can afford $10 to do so for an hour. I want all people driving to the coast to stop and enjoy them. I want people driving down I-5 to take a break and visit our parks and maybe stay and spend some money. Yes, county residents can buy an annual pass. However, many people just passing through, and it's not practical for them to buy an annual pass. Sadly, I think doubling the fee from $5 to $10 per visit will discourage a lot of people from visiting. People will either not stop or not pay the increased fee or any fee to drive into the park for a few minutes. Let's keep the day-use fee at $5 or go back to the $2 that it was a few years ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else like to speak to this? Mr. Fitch?
I have to reiterate on that, you guys charging people fees to go use?
I'm sorry.
Mr. Fitch, return resident?
Thank you.
Your fees for these parks are getting out of hand and outrageous, and you're going to have individuals saying, screw those fees, sitting on a bucket, and you're going to have lines of feces all over Grants Pass and Josephine County. So rethink your fees.
Okay, thank you, sir. Right here in the aisle.
Judy Aaron's, resident of Josephine County. I feel like I left my IQ at home. When I come to these meetings, I learn a lot, and subjects that are not my passion When I come to these meetings, I learn a lot and subjects that are not my passion right now because I do other things, obviously, that I reiterated on. But you had indicated that you're just, you're not making any profit on that. You're just kind of breaking even. And maybe there's statistics out there and you probably have done them before or whatever. But I do, I have compassion because the parks are wonderful. We have some great parks. But for people passing through, if they want to stay here or just in and out of the parks, the fee that they're charging, I think, I think there's some reason, there's some good logic behind what a few of these folks were saying this morning. So I'm not that familiar with it, but if they're correct, I just hope that they, if you're responsible for maintaining or setting the fees for the park, maybe to make sure that we aren't making any profit from them. I know the maintenance, and I think this is one of the things that have gone up, labor costs. And I know if that's relating to this or not, because we see labor costs going off the cliff type of thing. So just something to consider. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak this morning to this subject? Yes, sir. Against the back wall.
Patrick Rooney, Grants Pass. Yeah, I don't want to pile on here, guys, but just my two cents. There, you know, you could, on paper, somebody can draw up a budget and say, hey, we've got these fees here. If we double them here, we're going to make X amount of money. But as we know with taxes and things like that, it doesn't always work that way. Because those people who decide not to use the parks are not going to pay the $10 fee. And so people are much more inclined at a lower price to actually use the parks and pay the fee. So that's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak to this subject? This subject only? We're talking about the fee schedule. I know you just walked in. Would you like to speak to that? Okay. On this subject matter, it will be maybe in a moment. I don't see anybody else who wants to raise their hand. Okay, I'll bring it back to the board. Commissioner Smith, do you want to respond or any comments?
I think we need to understand that parks are self-supporting. Cost of labor has gone up. Everybody's getting raises, everybody's getting their benefits. If you like your parks, if you go back before the parks were self-supporting, they were in miserable shape. When we changed the process and made the parks self-supporting, they got better and better. The reason we have nice parks is because they make enough money to cover the maintenance and the ground crews and the rangers and everybody that does all the maintenance on our beautiful parks. So, yeah, it seems like a lot, but you know, if you live in the county, I buy an annual fee. And it's cheap. You know, I pay, now we're going to pay $35 a year for, I go to the parks as many times as I want. I can understand, maybe you think it's going to hinder people driving through, but I'll tell you something. I doubt most of the people driving through our county say, well gee, I'm going to go on this map and look at, oh, look at that park, I'm going to go there. I don't think that happens very much. So, you know, if you could show me some statistics, maybe that'd be different. But anyway, we want the parks to be self-supporting. That's what this is all about. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Barnett, any comments or response?
Yes, I did post a series of videos. I visited all the parks in Josephine County. It had never been done and tried to educate the public on how the parks work in Josephine County. They're an enterprise fund, which means they're self-sufficient. We do not pay any taxes. None, zero. So the perception is because of city, you pay taxes for those parks, you should be able to use county parks, right? It's not true. Enterprise fund, private parks, they're only alive with the money that they generate. And our parks are fantastic. I totally agree. But the only way that they can survive, and this would be a question that I would encourage you to contact Director Tamra Martin on, she's wonderful, she loves her parks, they do wonderful things, the rangers and everybody. We have great parks. However, they're not free. And I know that for veterans in this county, they do offer a Parks Pass for a day-use fee. You can go there, show your credentials and you can get that. So that's a little perk for those veterans out there, which we do have a huge population. Otherwise, the cheapest way to do it is buy that annual Parks Pass. And if you go to the parks a lot, like to walk your dogs, even the dog park, you got to have a parking pass. And on Schroeder Lane. So I know it's, the rates are really the enterprise fund. It's just like the airports as well. They're self-sufficient, they're an enterprise fund as well. We don't pay taxes for the airports. They're here as a luxury for us as a benefit, but they have to rent on their own and get those funds. So I just wanted to clear the air on that, on that. If you do have any questions, please contact Director Martin. She does a fantastic job. She'll listen to you as well. And can I answer Ms. Berg's since she brought something up?
Sure, you can say whatever you want.
Since, yeah, so Ms. Berg, Deb, thank you. I know you're passionate about it. And Frank Boothby is the new community advisor position that he just got. Great guy. I'm on the advisory council as well, but I would suggest maybe talking to Frank Boothby and bring that up. I know Tamra, you sent an email and that did get forwarded and, but I want that. I, I'm learning all this, as you know, so, but I'm passionate about it. I know it's a great program. I know you love that program. But I would encourage Frank Boothby. Do contact him. I'd like, did you? Okay. That's the only thing I can do because he's in that role now, so, but.
Right, let's not make this a back and forth. And let's try to stay on topic here with the fees that we're talking about.
Sorry, I just wanted to give you a quick answer.
Okay, thank you. I would just like to point out that there's a misconception here that the spreadsheet and these numbers are just thrown together willy-nilly. This county has some great people running departments and I believe that they do a fantastic job in calculating their actual costs and their proposed fees reflect those actual costs. It is our responsibility to run our balance sheet to zero because we're not for profit, but we do have to cover our costs. So with that, I would entertain a motion. And the motion is to approve Board Order Number 2025-074. And I won't read the text of it completely, but I would entertain that motion.
I make a motion, entertain that motion as stated.
Second, the motion?
Okay, so we have a motion and second, and I will just confirm by reading the motion that I believe that you are making, and that is to approve Board Order Number 2025-074 in the matter of uniform procedure for setting the fees charged by the County Board of Commissioners, various fees from the surveyor, various fees from the public works, various fees from the recreation, various fees from the animal shelter, various fees, excuse me, from public health and various fees from, yes, public health and adopting the fee schedule. Is that correct?
Yes, item six.
Thank you. So we have a motion and second, any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnett?
Yes.
Commissioner Black?
Yes.
Motion carry, three to zero.
Excuse me. Right, next item on the agenda, we have administrative actions in consideration of, and this is the 2025-2026 VOCA and CFA non-competitive grant. And I believe we have DA Eastman here to speak to that. Good morning.
See. So I went over this last Monday at the admin, but I found answers to Chair Black's question, so I wanted to start with those. So basically, VOCA is Victims of Crime Act. This predates me, the federal grant to counties through, it's administered by the State's Department of Justice. It goes to all 36 district attorney's offices, get a portion to share based on population cases, et cetera. And then the Child Advocacy Center and some DV, like the Women's Crisis Center, those kind of things. It's all for victims. Originally this year, we were worried we weren't going to get any because the DOJ, Oregon DOJ could not sign the...
Can you speak into the microphone?
Is it not on?
Yeah, people, no, it's on.
Oh, okay.
You're just too tall. Ah, yeah, now it's going to work much better. We want people to hear.
So originally, the Oregon Department of Justice was not able to sign because the federal Department of Justice grant application included comply with Department of Homeland Security, Immigration, Customs Enforcement. We were, all 36 DA's offices and the Child Advocacy Centers were panicking that we weren't going to get any money. Then a second one came through, because normally these are for two years. So this is a long explanation on why it's only for one year, I think. But it came through without those conditions. DOJ signed it. So basically what's before you, the board is a status quo. It funds about 60% of the three, the 2.6 victims assistance. And then the CFA grant, which is outlined in there as well, funds about 40, I think it's 42 or 44% of the victims assistance supervisor. And they do all things victims for our office, which is ranges from somebody trespassing at Walmart to victims of sex abuse or murder victims' families, et cetera. We, it's constitutional requirements under the Oregon Constitution, victims have enumerated rights that we try to meet all of those. And just timing-wise, I just did our key performance measure for the legislature on, one of those is victim, how many we notify within five days. And we're consistently 98, 99%. This year, we were at 98%, which is about as, I'm going to say that's perfect because the 2% we don't notify within five days, don't have phones, are houseless, don't want to talk to us, it's sort of incidental or statistical. So Chair Black, you had a couple of questions I wanted to answer that I didn't have, I was a little off. I said it was about 50/50 general fund, VOCA. I did my own spreadsheet this morning to not bother Director Nelson anymore, since I've been bothering her quite a bit lately. So the general fund match for the total Victims Assistance Department is 106,585.80. And the grants, the two, the CFA portion and the VOCA are 219,832. So I was wrong when I said it's about 50/50. It's 60/30 or 2/3, it's one to two, basically. And you had also asked when this started and I said I wasn't sure. It's normally done in July when the fiscal starts and then this was October. So I think we have been using general fund with the anticipation, I don't know that part, but we get the whole thing whenever it's signed. So I think the only thing, other than that, nothing has changed in it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for answering those questions. Commissioner Smith, any questions?
I have no questions for them.
Commissioner Barnett?
I've reviewed this.
No, no, I researched it and so, understand it, so, thank you.
Okay, yeah, I don't have any questions anymore from the ones you've answered, but thank you. All right, next we'll move on the agenda. This is requests and comments from the citizens. This is where each person will be given three minutes to speak. I'm going to read something that I was given by legal counsel a few weeks ago to remind everybody that business sessions are not and have never been the appropriate forum for political campaigning. Public funds enable the broadcast of these meetings and we will not permit you to employ public funds for the purpose of advocating for your political cause. We otherwise welcome your generalized comments about public policy. I'll remind everybody of our rules. They're up on the wall, two walls right there. And I just ask that everybody be civil and polite when they address this board. Who would like to speak first? Right here in the aisle.
Again, good morning. Judy Aaron's, resident of Josephine County. Recently, this is, I want to, oh, first I'm going to start and say a positive that I'm so happy and praise the Lord that we have our government, US government, that's open now. That's a real giant plus for those that believe in, they do, they do a job what they're supposed to do. And the airlines will be running now for the people want to go, you know, visit relatives for Thanksgiving. But we have, there's a wake-up call that happened in New York City that the rest of all these little counties and communities should be aware of with Mondani getting elected recently. He won't be taking office until January 1st. But it is a real wake-up call. And I'm going to bring education into this in a minute, so you can, you can connect the dots here. This guy claims to be a Muslim. He claims that he believes in regulating little small mom-and-pop stores for prices and everything and the list goes on, you know, he's going to give all these freebies, which he won't. He won't give free transportation, all that. But he, and if you've noticed, if you were following that in the last week, he had all the youth behind him, which is very scary. So that kind of tells you, I'm going to now bounce into education. Because right now, and which I'm going to be sharing and checking and at the schools, you know, three types of governments. We have capitalism, socialism, and communism. Now, I don't know if Mondani is closer to communism, people say, and even our president versus socialism. But those two, socialism and communism, are pretty bad apples. You know, some people want to sit on their rear end and watch soap operas and then the recs that are working, they want, you know, want the, they want the benefits from the ones that work hard eight or 10 hours a day. So my point is, in directing this towards education, when I saw the youth in New York City, you could tell they were all brainwashed. I mean, you can tell that the Education Department was, give me the freebies, give me the free bus rides, et cetera. We're headed, this, like I said, this should be a wake-up call for every county in the United States, in every city, that this Mondani, he's not stopping there with his philosophy. So in the public education, I encourage anybody to go to these school board meetings. Here's one, I believe next week on Wednesday at 5 o'clock for the school district at the Three Rivers School District. I'll have to check over here. But we have to make sure they're not teaching socialism, which they basically are. And even my son, back when he was in seventh grade, they have groupie, where you sit there and people would copy from his homework that he did. And he said, Mom, that's not fair. I said, well, go to a school board meeting. And he did. They thought it was going to be attorneys. This is the reason I don't like this groupie thing, because people share, people that work hard. So let's just get that education, make sure people wear, watch in-home, go to these school board meetings, find out what's going on with that socialist, because the next step is not a good step. And I think my time's up and thank you very much.
Thank you. Right here at the second row, the black hoodie.
Victor, Grants Pass. This was supposed to be the weekly business session, but has become the once-in-awhile, whenever we feel like it, session. What is the problem? Has high-paying, has the high-paying position the taxpayers hired you to do become too much of a nuisance for you to show up and do your job? You make up and attempt to impose rules to override freedoms afforded us by the Bill of Rights, the Charter, and the Oregon law. You force your Christian religious dogma on us in total disregard for the Proclamation Clause of the Constitution as upheld by the Supreme Court. The government shall not engage in religion or non-religion. Religion is not the business of the government. On September 2nd, while seated in the hallway, listening to the administrative workshop, Commissioner Black, you took a picture of me, and Commissioner Barnett, you were video recording me. In doing so, you created a public record. This is notice to not delete those public records as I will be requesting them. On September 30th, I was again seated in the hallway quietly and peacefully observing the administrative workshop meeting when I was confronted by security judge Josh and another security clown that said I had to leave. I refused as I was not committing a crime and they had no valid reason to trespass me from a public building. At that point, they threatened to taser me and remove me from the building. That is when I entered the meeting room, where you can see the door to the right open at timestamp 3318 on the video. And I took refuge from these thugs in the far corner of the room. At timestamp 2842 on the recording, you can see through the window to the left as four sheriff's deputies leave who apparently had been summoned to remove me. Sheriff Daniels arrived and intently observed me while speaking to persons through the hinged crack of the door until the meeting ended, when I left quietly. On October 7th, at the administrative workshop, Black shut down the meeting for security reasons, specifically me, as you can see on the video record, sitting quietly and peacefully. I was confronted by security who said I had to leave. The room was cleared. In the hallway, I was confronted by seven Grants Pass Police Department officers who would not, but for one, identify by name and badge number as prescribed under the Oregon Revised Statute, aggressively surrounding me, questioning me, while gloving up, for, in their minds, I guess, preparation to go hands-on with me. Sheriff Daniels and Deputy Geiger also arrived. After much ado, the meeting resumed with me in attendance. At the 1800 timestamp, I did the part of the meeting pursued by Daniels. This is the state of First Amendment freedoms in Josephine County today. On the wall outside the Commissioner's office, where the photos of our leaders hang, Trump, Kotick, Smith, and Barnett. In the spot with Black's name hangs a Charles Schulz cartoon picture of Snoopy in an old plane. I hope the county has received permission to use copyrighted material to use as a public record for display in its courthouse. To any of you I have offended this year, please work on yourself so I don't have to come back and do it again in 2026. Oh, wait, some of you won't be here.
Thank you, sir. Who else would like to speak? We're here with the olive-colored vest.
Got it right.
Deb Berg, Josephine County. So I have yet to receive any answers on my ARPA airport fund questions. So way back when, when we got our public records requests filled, I did receive one. And I know that 167,000 and change was spent out at IV for some kind of a plan. So digging, in 2022, Josephine County from the state of Oregon received 750,000 for the project. So even though you've transferred a million to the GP Airport Potable Water Project, we still have 750,000 ear tagged for that project. So how about some economic development? And then I just want to clarify. So on the form today, down 46B, it said recreation various fees. various fees. So not having had an opportunity to look at the website, I didn't know if there was a proposed fee change. I've spoken, I've done my homework. It's not that I'm not trying to get the kids to pay. I just want to make sure that they are not being charged unfairly, when adults aren't being charged the same fees. So we just need to have a good layout, those fair manual fees, who's paying what and why, and just make sure that only the fairgrounds is collecting fees for the fairgrounds, unless it's program-specific by a program. FFA has fees, 4H has fees, Youth and Ag has fees. They get to collect them, but never should they be collecting in their name, and you'll see that it says "Make checks payable to Youth and Ag." Never should kids not in a program be required to pay to an NGO something that the fairgrounds wants to collect. That's the blurring of the lines that gets the DOJ really upset. So I'm asking that you look at it. It may not have been a fee proposal, but it's something you guys need to look at, because you just said earlier today, we're not in this to make a profit. Okay, well, why are we making a profit? Why are we charging kids more than we're charging adults? Never is that okay when, in a situation like I'm outlining. So please, look into it. Reach out to me if you need to, because it needs to be carefully looked into. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone on this side here? Here we go, fourth row.
Hi, I'm Eva Avery, Grants Pass. I just found out in the last couple of days that I have made a list. I didn't know anything about this, or why this list was compiled, but I have since discovered that I've made this list that was posted in a couple of places. Josephine County Government and Politics, Grants Pass, and then also, let me find the other one. This is on support our Josephine County Commissioners. And I and a apparently growing list of people have been placed on this list because we are disruptors, purveyors of negativity. I, quite frankly, am a charming ray of sunshine, so I don't understand that. Also, I was a little disappointed that I was so far down on the list, because a couple of years ago, I was being accused of being a plant here in Josephine County, because I'm a lefty. So again, I'm a little disappointed that I'm so down on the list. I would like to correct the record. My name is misspelled, and if you're going to malign me, I'd like you to do it correctly. If you'd like that information, let me know. Somebody by the name of Christina Schlegel apparently originated this list. I don't know that person, could not pick her out of a line, a lineup, but apparently she knows me. So I am pretty powerful, I guess. Surprised. I do have one question, however. Since I have made this list, and apparently it's a hit list of sorts, I'm wondering if I'm going to be requiring protection? Do I need a bodyguard? And if so, is there somewhere where I can submit my invoices to be reimbursed for having to employ someone to protect me in my home? This kind of thing is so petty. It's so childish. It's so ridiculous. It is unfitting to our governance that we have this kind of malarkey being spread in our community. But, you know, have at it. Thanks so much.
Thank you. In the green jacket over here in the fourth row?
Morning, Commissioners. Mike Weber, Grants Pass. As you know, I used to work for the county, and I'm just here to resolve kind of a point of frustration for myself. This belongs to the county. Myself and a bunch of other folks who are let go, I've never been able to return them. I'm not sure what to do with it. But short of throwing it away, I'm looking for a head nod that I can leave it with you today.
Certainly. You can leave it here at the front. Thank you.
The other thing I wanted to bring up is, I've been trying to return this for quite a while. A couple of months ago, I did reach out to somebody else I knew in IT, and asked if I could leave it with them. They wanted nothing to do with it, which I respect. But I wanted to raise a concern that they hadn't mentioned that bothered me quite a bit. And I had made the comment that Director Sellers was a bit AWOL in us being able to return our equipment. And they laughed at that and said, Well, that fits, because over the last year, they were lucky to see him more than once or twice a week, if that, and he was regularly gone for a couple of weeks, or even more than a month at a time. That was concerning to me as a taxpaying citizen, and I will leave that information with you, and let you do with it what you will. But I would hope that would concern you as well. That's all.
All right, we'll go to the south side. I see your hand, Mr. Fitch. Good morning again.
Morning, gentlemen. I have to reiterate on Mr. Fitch returning resident. I have to reiterate with this hit list. It's not the first time this crap's been going on, and it's always been from a top-paid official, what we call and classify as a military midget. And to address this stuffed bear comment, we're working on a Build-A-Bear, so you guys can coddle when you go to your panic rooms, when we go up to the State Supreme Court. But the one thing that got me the most was the meltdown of Commissioner Barnett, saying that the community needs to be unified, but you're out there on social media, slandering, defaming, harassing, doxing people in the community. And you say you're part of this bad actor. You're one of the worst, buddy. You want to start a fight with somebody, don't hover over your gun. You got kicked out of Lakeside for the same behavior, and that crap isn't going to be tolerated in here at all. Now, Commissioners, you got, you've got something to think about, because we are going to the State Supreme Court, because I know that you will be recalled here soon, and the disrespect that you give to the community shows that you don't have a unity in this community. You only care about yourselves, and to hell with everybody else, and you don't listen. But this whole thing about acting like a social media victim, using scripted dialogue from privacy.com, using your kids and your wives as a victim, fabricated police reports, will be ending as well, because the courts already know, and we've already ended two of your guys' BS complaints. Thanks for not interrupting my time. Have a great day.
Thank you. Anyone else this side here like to speak? Against the back wall?
Patrick Rooney, Grants Pass. Don't know how to follow that, but I'll try. By the way, I support you guys, not only everything you do, and none of us are gonna support everything on everything somebody does. But I'm here, I want to have some unity as far as getting together and solving issues, and having some mutual respect. So I, for one, am standing for that. I did want to mention, this thing is falling down on me here. I shouldn't have touched it to start with, I think. I'm just gonna hold it for now. I did want to mention SB forty-eight. And the district attorney was here speaking about it. I heard his testimony in the city of Grants Pass, I think it was a Public Safety Committee, not a committee, but a citizens group, I think, that, that speaks to the, to the Grants Pass City Council. SB forty-eight allows the revolving door criminal justice system that we have here. It's absolutely outrageous. It's not talked about very much. Thirty-one fifteen is talked about a lot, but SB forty-eight is a lot of the cause of people being arrested for small crimes, but they are important crimes, because they are endangering the citizens, and going right back on on the street. And the district attorney is saying they don't really have the ability to do much about that, because they're stuck with forty-eight. Well, they should be able to have some type of a bill. The district attorney said in the session, that he hasn't really supported any bill or legislation that would get forty-eight either repealed or gutted of the worst elements of it. And I know there's a lot of support for doing that. I don't know why a bill has not been written yet. The Chamber of Commerce President was in that meeting, and he was all for it. He said there's a lot of interest in the business community, probably all over the state. There should be a bill, and they will get a lot of business support. They'll get a lot of support from the people. And I think we can start, if we can get in that direction, we could do a lot towards getting some law and order here, and cleaning up the cages, for lack of a better word, that we have, that nobody really likes, that are sitting right across the street from the police station, and near the city council chambers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, we'll have to tighten that. Thank you. Anyone else? We'll go to the back here with the blue jacket. It is blue, right? Harry Winkle, okay. Harry Winkle.
Chris Kirby, County of, Josephine County. I just got back with seven different people from this area, from Washington DC on Sunday. We had an incredible trip. And to the anti-God speech, God is everywhere in Washington DC, everywhere. I mean, there's statues of Lincoln praying. The church that all the presidents go to before their inauguration is right across the street. Every single president went over there for a service or a blessing before. It's everywhere. So it is part of our government. It is part of us. It is part of this country. It was very impactful to see how much it was part of our country. Thank you, guys. I appreciate all you do. I know it's tough, but hanging there, we appreciate everything you all are doing. And I know Christina Schlegel, and she did not make that list. I think some internet, I don't know what they're called, evil person created it, made it look like it was from her. It wasn't her. She's not like that. She's a very kind person. So that's all. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Would anyone like to speak from this side here? Yes, ma'am, with the hand up.
Gail Gasso, Grants Pass. I see you duped another sucker. Do these words ring true? Familiar, Mr. Black? These are somewhat the comments you stated at one oh seven PM, outside of a post office table on November 6th. This was in earshot of the citizen walking away from the table. Need I remind you to be civil and polite to constituents, even outside of these walls? Maybe you should stop doing the same, duping citizens of Josephine County. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Either side, front, back, foyer. Hands up. I see none. I'll bring this back to the board. It's an opportunity to respond if you choose to do so. Commissioner Smith, you're up first.
I would just say one thing. Victor, do you think maybe your costumes are drawing some undue attention? That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Barnett?
I like the positivity, not the negativity. And that's all I have.
Okay. Ooh, caught me off guard.
That was quick.
That was quick. Thank you. A couple of questions were asked, and a question was asked about ARPA, some ARPA money. Deb, you have an email that responded to that question that came back to you on November the 3rd. I was CC'd on it. There were some concern or questions about some doings on Facebook. I don't know what's going on on Facebook, and I'm glad I don't. I would like to remind people that, that address us here, it would be a lot easier for us to understand what you're talking about if you come up here and introduce yourself, give a body or a description of what you're talking about, give us a solution, maybe, and then wrap it up with a conclusion. That's just my suggestion to you. I think that would be very helpful to us, to my colleagues, to help us understand and to be better commissioners, if we can understand what you're referring to. So with that, I will continue on the agenda. Next item is, I would entertain a motion to approve two zero two five dash two zero two six, I'm sorry, for the, let me rephrase this. This is for approval of the twenty-five twenty-six Voca and CFA non-competitive grant.
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six Voca and CFA grant.
And I'll second that.
Motion second, any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Barnett?
Yes.
Commissioner Black?
Yes.
Motion carry, three to zero.
Okay, next up is board business, but we have nothing on the agenda for board business, so we'll move on to the approval of the consent calendar. This consists of the minutes, which the drafts, the draft minutes are available for viewing at our board's office. It includes the Mining Advisory Committee meeting from November, correction, April the 9th, 2025, the Mining Advisory Committee from July the 9th, 2025, the admin workshop from October the 28th, 2025, the weekly business session from October the 30th, 2025, the admin workshop from November the 3rd, 2025, and the Board Journal from the month of October, 2025. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion second, any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnett?
Yes.
Commissioner Black?
Yes.
Motion carry, three to zero.
Thank you. Next up is other matters. This is where the Commissioners may introduce other matters for consideration by the entire board. Commissioner Smith?
Just one thing. I think, I think we, as a society and as a community, probably ought to look to some economic development solutions. A good-paying jobs solve a lot of problems, and we surely don't have enough of those in our community. So if you've got suggestions to help our economy grow, to maybe bring some more good-paying jobs to Josephine County, I'd appreciate any help you have in that area, because if you look at what happens when a society has economic problems, they turn to drugs, alcohol, and crime. And that's exactly what we're experiencing here in Josephine County. I think a stronger economy in our county would go a long ways to solving a lot of our problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Barnett, under other?
Announcements?
No, first other, and then we'll do announcements next time around. Okay. Under other matters, I'd like to bring up, I believe it was a few weeks ago, that there was a quite serious discussion about the county being involved with helping the city in resolving, or at least working towards a resolution, in helping the non-law-abiding citizens here in the city. Unfortunately, we did not come to any kind of an agreement or solution, but I think I speak for my colleagues here, in that we look forward to working with the city in any way that we can. I think we'd like to be a partner. We would like to help solve that problem. And I just want to throw this out in a public meeting here, that I, speaking for myself, am very open to working with the city and helping to resolve that. And I think my colleagues here feel the same. All right, with that, we'll move on to announcements. And Commissioner Smith, any announcements?
None at this time, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Barnett?
Just piggyback on what you just said. I think that's good. Working with our colleagues in other areas, Cape Junction as well, you know, their mayor and everything, too. They have problems. So I think that's good of the Commissioners to reach out and do that. So thank you. I think that's important, like you said. Speaking of economic development, Veterans Day was just a couple of days ago, and I just want to thank all those businesses. I, look, we're not even a military city, not a military town. We're not. And normally around military installations, you see a lot of businesses support the military. In this community, this county, I saw on Tuesday, so many businesses offering discounts, or a free meal, or a haircut, or just a token of thank you. And we're not even a military town, but we do have a lot of military retirees and service members that are in the Guard here. We're a Guard state. We have no active-duty Air Force or component installations. They're all Garden Reserve, which is Army and Air Force, and we have Coast Guard as well, and Naval Reserve. But I just want to say, the businesses that, that did that, it's gonna come back to you, because those people were so appreciative to get a token of thank you. And for economic development, like Commissioner Smith said, I think it's important to support those businesses that support our veterans in our community. And on Tuesday, I saw that. I saw the love from our community, and it was very nice to see. Public health, I talked to our interim director, Janet Frederickson, and we're having, flu shot season is here. So she is offering flu shots over there. And you'll, I'm just saying, if you want the influenza AMB, that's all they have over there. And if you want, and want, and concerned about that, no, no line, I mean, it's pretty easy to get. So I just wanted to say that. And then also, under public health, we have the burn line, Josephine County Burn Line. A lot of people were pinging me lately that, hey, how come we can't burn, you know? There's an environmental component of it, they go out daily, they send up a balloon, they see if the air quality's good enough for you to burn out in the Josephine County Burn Control Area. The phone number is 476-WOOD, check that out, and it'll tell you yes or no. And also go on the website, josephinecounty.gov, look under the wood burning advisory notice. And people were getting frustrated, because we haven't had availability of a burn day. And she said that, just keep checking it, it is updated. And there was a glitch on the website about the updating of that, so for a few days there, it was given the wrong information, and she apologized for that, and has been fixed. So do check that out, if you want to know, the Josephine County Burn Control Area, 476-WOOD. And I think that was it, she said, just be safe about it, but it's an environmental thing when you can burn a knot. And that's it.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. I have no announcements, other than if we want to make Josephine County a better place, I recommend pick up a piece of trash and smile, and smile at the next person you see. With that, we will adjourn this morning at 11:11. Thank you, everyone, be safe.
Thank you.